All rise.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
August 26, 2004, Council meeting.
Alderman Anderson.
Here.
Alderman Bab. Alderman Grainer. Alderman Joe.
Here.
Alderman Newhouse.
Here.
Alderman Newman.
Here.
Also present, Court Steel, Treasury Warrant, Attorney Superintendent Smith, Street Superintendent Helms, Police Chief Merritt, Deputy Clerk Foulle.
Excuse me.
Building Inspector Beerborn, Attorney. My report, so on the September 9th meeting, Dale Sandrock over here is the gentleman that has funded the sports complex down there in North Peaking on Main Street. He wants to address the council to give an update on that. There's much other special stuff that affect the residents here. So he'll be here on that night.
I just wanted to make the council aware that on the 26th of August, we will have our retention records disposal. I'm sorry. Yep. That's right. The state has going to go ahead to dispose of these records. Confidential Security Corporation will be disposing of them on the 28th for a very minimal fee. So that will be occurring. And then Nancy from the fire department has agreed to instruct all of our full-time and part-time employees on AED and CPR, and that will cost just $219.45. Just so you're all aware, all of the employees throughout the city will have that training. Also, just a reminder, we'll be closed.
It says it's April 1st. Labor Day.
Or Labor Day. Geez. Labor Day.
Well, I mean.
We were closed on Memorial Day, but we will be closed on Labor Day.
She meant the second meeting.
And yep, and the meeting will be the following Tuesday.
Yeah. That one was.
Anything else?
That's it.
Mr. Attorney.
I have no report.
Mr. Inspector.
No report.
Citizens wishing to address the council.
Mike Lawrence, 207 Decatur Road. I just wanted to ask a few questions about the meeting minutes from the August 5th meeting. Under Other Business, it says that we had a Costco membership card. The mayor had it, but the city never used it. Was that card ever used?
Was it ever used? Yes.
But not by the city?
Yes, it was.
The meeting minutes that you guys approved at the last meeting, right here, says that it wasn't used for the city.
It was.
Not during that calendar year.
So it was used, but not for the city.
There was a Costco membership card that was purchased, well, the membership was obtained, and the city did not, it was obtained before last year, but the city did not use it last year.
Were there any purchases made under that membership, is my question?
There were, yes.
But they were not for the city?
Correct. They did not come out of city funds, nor were they under the non-tax exempt. They were taxed.
Okay. My next question, I'd like to just have some clarification on. Mr. Mayor, it says that you requested a police commissioner badge to get discounts on vacation. Why would you even ask for that?
What else you got?
You don't have an answer at all?
What else?
That's my question. Why would you ask for a police commissioner badge?
So the period for public comment is an opportunity for you to comment and have your messages, concepts, ideas heard by the elected officials. It's not a Q and A session.
The next thing I just have more clarity on is the mayor made copies of timesheets, questioned overtime, and took things out of the office. Did you take timesheets out of the office?
What's your next question?
Thank you.
Any other citizens wishing to address the council? Yep.
Good evening. Talking to another citizen. Work around here. So my name is.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, my name's Kelly Shipley. I'm the Government Affairs and Public Policy Director for Brightspeed. I hope everybody knows who we are. Yes? Very good. I'll just give a quick little overview of exactly who we are. Back in October of '22, we purchased the assets of the former CenturyLink company in many communities in 20 different states. In Illinois as an example, North Peaking, Marquette Heights, Beacon, Avon, Knoxville, just to give you an idea. And what we've been doing since that time is beginning to invest in our communities that we hadn't invested in in quite some time. With that, we are implementing a structural upgrade of all of our facilities from the old copper network, the old dial tone hanging on your wall, or maybe you had DSL, Digital Subscriber Line Internet Service, and we're now doing fiber in all of our markets, and we're investing privately with our own private funding to do that. About a few weeks back, talked to the mayor a little bit about the project and wanted to come back and address the entire council, maybe see if there's any questions on that. Our plan is to deploy 100% fiber network in Marquette Heights. It's also part of North Beacon build also. Our main office sits over North Main Street, over there. That way. Okay. I'm getting there. But that is basically where all the service will come out of. It'll be a variety of aerial work as well as underground work. A lot of the aerial work will go on existing poles that we may be on already, and that's how we will structure our network. We also have joint use agreements in place already with, it's Ameren, correct, is your power company down here.
Correct.
We may have some of our own poles that we would use for that network. We would then also do buried work where there's not aerial available. I was doing a little driving around this evening before meeting, and there's quite a bit of buried work already, where there's no poles to come off of. In those situations, we would do buried work again. The biggest thing that we want to do, and what I want to stress as part of this project, is we want transparency for our organization and our company. We've been the old phone provider for decades, and we know that we probably didn't invest well enough over the years, and now we're doing that. And so we want to make sure that we're covering all the ground that we need to, to make sure that everybody's comfortable with what we're doing, because guaranteed, you as older persons and the mayor are going to have questions probably asked of you locally by your residents in your neighborhoods, and I want to make sure we can give you the correct answers to do that. You know, we normally would talk about permitting and right-of-way things. We've kind of jumped into that and understand what we need to do from an ordinance perspective. You know, talking to the railroad, BNSF as an example, we will talk to them if there's any road crossings we have to be concerned about. Resident notifications, we will make sure that we contact the residents before we do any work. Maybe it's a postcard to each resident, maybe it's a door hanger, something of that nature. We love to jump on a Facebook site if you have one available within the city, as an example, or newsletter. We also will provide sheets of where we are going and when we're planned to go. We do a walkthrough, about 45 days out. Anybody's more than welcome to come with our engineers and do a walk-around if you'd like. Timeline is still to be determined. We're in the design phase right now, and so we have a lot of work to do still to cover and make sure we're doing things properly. But like I said, another big part of that transparency is also following up on areas of maintenance that we may not have done a good job at. When I say that, is there lines hanging off a pole that have been hanging for, I see a knot, thank you. It does happen. Or there are pads that may have bags in them, as an example. We want to know about that, because we want to clean up that type of work also. It's really important. People get, I get asked what costs a lot? This is going to be an all 100% fiber broadband network. We usually provide a 200 by 200 meg product, 500 by 500, one gig by one gig, and soon it'll be two gig by two gig. We start at $39, $49, and $50. So that's just promotional pricing. That's kind of been varying from state to state, but that's where we're at right now. Questions so far by anybody?
With your install, how many, so the last underground work that was done, I believe was done in four permits? I think they sectioned the town out four permits by permits. Are you guys planning on doing the same thing, or do you want one permit for the entire town? What's your plan with that?
Yeah, quite honestly, we're going to do what you want us to do. A lot of cities we go into, villages, towns, we've done blanket permits for the entire village, for the city, as an example. Some have sectioned it off because administratively, it's easier to keep up with that. So again, we would probably say, we'll roll with what you want us to do. I don't know who handles that, Tim, if that's your side of the family?
Yep, we'll be. Congratulations.
Just want to double check, but again, we want to work with how you guys do things in your administration. You know, we don't want to make you change up how you do things just because of us. We want to follow your lead to a certain extent. If we have suggestions along the way, we'd love to do that, too.
How deep are you going to go?
Minimums 36, if we do buried work. Aerial work, obviously, you can see our lines currently, right? I can walk outside right now and probably point a few out, but we'll follow that. And it's a stranded, so we strand up and lash up. It's called overlap with an existing fiber, about the size of my pinky finger, roughly speaking. And then we won't go out to every individual address in the initial build. We're only going to provide service out to those customers, potential customers, that actually want our service. Then we would do either a buried drop, maybe, might be an aerial drop, if they currently have an old aerial drop now of copper for the telephone line. The telephone line comes up a lot, too. People say, I'm going to lose my dial tone. I'm going to lose my old phone that I still have on the wall. Who has one still?
What is that?
Pretty good. I get usually one or two, so I'm betting.
There are folks in town that still do.
But lots still do, and they rely on that, and that's not going to go anywhere. We can still provide that dial tone service over the fiber also.
Telephone pole on Decatur, I bet you that says.
Bet you're right.
Maybe?
No, I bet you it is. Do you guys provide a truck to hold the pole?
Say that again, sir. Do we?
Provide a truck to hold the pole?
While we're installing it?
No, we have a fire hydrant that's going to need to be backed out, and it's right next to a pole.
If there's maintenance work that needs to get done or moved because of a pole, we'll have to identify if it's our pole for starters, or if it's an Ameren pole.
Big box like this.
Well, it could be an Ameren pole also. So that's one of those maintenance items that we'll have to follow up on.
Need to be checked out.
So if you can give me the address and such, or want to give it, Tim?
202 Decatur.
I'm sorry?
202 Decatur.
And that's a pole that needs to be moved? Is that interesting?
Well, not moved.
They need to do utility work there.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
If you had a truck that would hold the pole while you were doing the work.
Oh, I get it, you get it.
Ameren has done that.
Yes, we have that capability. Other questions?
So that's possibly a reason why we haven't had some poles removed that Ameren has had. There's two poles next to each other.
Yeah.
And possibly your lines are still on the old pole.
Correct, and we haven't been asked to do the transfer at this time.
Yeah, yeah.
I had a similar conversation in Knoxville two weeks ago also. Same exact conversation.
I think there's three or four of them in town.
Yeah, the Ameren had gone.
Couple of them with the wires that had come down and they.
10, 12 months ago and put new poles in, and they had not done a lot of transfers at this time. And we'll only do that transfer, and they need to contact us, too, to understand when we have to do that. So it's kind of a partnership. What timing?
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much for the affirmation.
My pleasure.
And we'll keep in touch.
Yeah, as things come up, we'll keep everybody informed of timelines, what we're looking at before we do our engineering walkthrough, like we had talked about a couple of weeks back. But I'm also available for questions anytime, too. I know, you've got my info team, you've got my info, so if anybody wants to go, I'll be directly. Again, I handle the state of Wisconsin as well as Illinois, so I do quite a bit of travel, so I'm always available for questions. But thank you very much for your time, do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Get you back to fun stuff.
Any other citizens wishing to address the council? For standing committees, more.
I'll let you do what's going on.
Sit back.
First of all, I want everybody's input as soon as possible, like tonight. Our water main from the curb line by the school going to curb stop to Dollar General has been refixed six different times, and we found another hole after we fixed one today. So I would like to replace that pipe instead of keep fixing them.
What do you estimate the project to be, Tim?
Do what?
What do you estimate the project to involve?
I have no idea.
15?
We just dug it up today.
15. So you're, because that was nine to do out there as far as they went with a two-inch, you're going to be at least 15 to do that.
If I can get them to go from the valve down to two-inch, it'd be a lot easier.
So your recommendation to the city to consider is the installation of new pipe from where?
The curb line by the school.
To where?
To the park, almost the parking lot of Dollar General, unless we move their curb stop.
At a very loosely estimated $15,000 expense, the goal being so you no longer have a problematic pipe that you have to every six months to a year repair or patch?
I found out more information tonight, so it's been repaired approximately six times.
Okay.
And it's not that big of a stretch.
But am I fairly stating your question? Okay.
The other question would be is can we relocate the curb stop to the right-of-way instead of the middle of the grass block?
No, it's closer to the parking lot.
Well, it's still in the grass, though.
Yep.
So can we reestablish the curb stop in the right-of-way?
Yeah, we'd have to dig that up and put a splice in it.
Because if they're boring through, they're going to bore from one side of the road to the other side of the road, pothole there, and then bore to the connection. So it may be worth, in turn, would, if we get, if we reach out to the Dollar General property owner and come with an agreement that, hey, we would put this install in, but from X forward, from the curb stop to your building would be your responsibility?
We wouldn't have to replace all the way to the building.
No, we just have to replace to where the existing curb stop is and remove that.
Yeah, because the curb stop right now is only about two feet from the parking lot.
Okay, so it's in that grassy, the whole area.
It's in the grass. It's not where we've had the breaks through the hill over the years.
Every time, especially if you're president.
You want to gather up all the information?
Here's a question. Question, Tim. It's four inch from the main to the shut-off, right? And then the Dollar General's the only thing running past the shut-off. Is that a two-inch to Dollar General?
I have no idea.
So you wanted to drop from a four-inch to a two-inch from the main. What if, would it be something that, with any development on those lots, that they'd be able to go, instead of coming under the road to the main?
Or would it tie off? If we put the curb stop in.
I'm just saying, the four-inch, would it be something feasible to try and tie into that four-inch to run down to, towards Kona Ice for a line that direction off of four-inch for a business down there?
Or instead of putting a curb stop, you put a valve body there and then go to the other side of the sidewalk and put their curb stop on the other side of the sidewalk? Or do you put them side by side in the right-of-way?
If something develops, you know, Kona Ice is wanting to develop something in their lot, they bought.
They could come off of the main.
Or are they, can they tie into water? Where can they tie into water? Would they have to go to the other side of the main, because it's on the other side of Jolene?
It's a 12-inch, too.
Right. So would they be able to feed off of that four-inch, which we had a lot less.
So it's kind of like what happens at LaSalle and Cavalier. It goes across the road, it comes up a little bit, and then stops.
Like Kona Ice is running across that issue right now, where they have water line to get to the main.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, would it be something less costly for them to come up and tie into that four-inch line?
Distant wise, it would be closer for them to come right across where their lot is from the main.
From the main, yes, but then you're talking, if you're going underneath the road, you're at the board, and that's going to get costly.
The same cost.
I'm saying.
You're going to have to go across the parking lot.
Well, they'd have to bore, they'd have to bore the entrance to.
But it would be, I believe, a lot less expensive to even dig a trench, because they could utilize their other accesses to the business until it got ran through, refill, and blacktop, then boring under the road or digging across the roadway.
There was a water line right at the all-dime, wasn't there? Only at all-dime down there?
Just, I was just thinking, down the road, if there's going to be something else there, as you were telling me this morning, there's like four other businesses in that Dollar General building at one time. It's probably why the four-inch line ran there.
The lawn, and that's what took the water over.
Yeah. So.
So it may be worth boring over in four-inch, put a valve shut-off on that side that could be dispatched out of, and then put their curb stop directly behind it and go there. Now, what would we need as an agreement with the property owner at the Dollar General, letting them know we would be doing this install on our dime initially, but then moving forward from curb stop to their building?
I think that would be best for clarity's sake. So 10 years down the road, if there's something that happens in the area that previously the city had fixed, but is now DG's responsibility, they don't act all surprise.
So is this something that the council wants to act on as soon as we get the proposal information, since it's across from the school and it's wide open?
Well, not like that.
The road is shut down.
It's still leaking.
So we, I mean, otherwise, we're looking three weeks out.
So is it leaking from the roadside or from Dollar General's side back?
Dollar General side.
So possibly one of the other breaks has leaked or something else in that side. How quickly can you put together the proposal for council consideration?
I can call Jake tomorrow and have him come out.
If you can get a bid, or whatever it is that you're proposing to put before the council, you could call a special meeting to have the approval, so you don't have the big old hole in the middle of your street for three weeks till you can act. That's what it's going to take.
We can also put it on the, on an agenda for.
Committee?
Committee.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
But if you can get us numbers back, we could give emergency approval and then.
Yes.
Just so that way they can have water service reestablished, and we can get repairs going.
I'll call him first thing in the morning.
Yeah, I'm going to pull open.
I would suggest if we can do that, put a four-inch valve in there and then curb stop on the backside. That way, just to their future development, you already got some infrastructure started.
And then do we, do we have? Lot right up the corner as well.
Do we have Josh, yeah, do we have Josh write us up an agreement, letting DG know that we're going to be making this repair, and we'll be reestablishing the curb stop in the right-of-way?
If that's where the council wants it, that's where I'll have a report.
My question is.
That's the best place to put it.
With the, is that the only services that, when it was, like, a longer man and stuff down there?
As far as I know, yes.
It doesn't go across and come up to?
As far as I know, that's the only.
Services.
It goes to Dollar General. Or to the, the old longer ramp that was there.
But we ought to put a four-inch, continue with the four-inch in order to, in case that changes or anything new comes in.
The other thing we would have to do, Tim, where the curb stop is, right there at the edge of the concrete or the blacktop, we'd have to open that up and make sure that they didn't continue with four to their building, because if it goes, if we go down to two-inch at the curb stop and then it opens up back to four, your water flow goes stagnant. So we would have to stay the same diameter beyond.
Because really, it might be a good idea to dig it up, because at one time, there was the beauty shop and barber shop there, and then the nail salon that was on the side.
But you're going to have to make a connection there anyways. At the existing curb stop, so at least open it up to know that they don't have four inches going, because then that tells you what you have to, and you may open that up before Jake gets here, so he knows whether you got to go two-inch or four-inch.
Yeah, because on the, what is it, G I S I? They don't even show that line going across the road.
I can believe that.
Well, we figured out last time, there's a ladder sticking out of it.
Do I?
Because it's like nine feet deep when they were in it last.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
I won't be able to do that Tuesday, but I'll put something together.
Oh, come on.
What else you got for water?
Okay. I need a new pump. The other one was taken in and checked, and he said it would cost more to fix it than it would for the other one.
That's a 12-volt pump, basically, to empty out hole.
And it's set up the same way as what we have.
What's that?
$1,439.
And who is that to?
Do I?
Who is that to, company? What company is that?
Water pumps, correct.
Huh?
Water pumps, correct.
Thank you.
I know you were looking, so I got one.
Yeah, it's right here. Jay Bridge, did everybody get the proposal for those? For the hydrants and the cut-in valves?
Anybody got any questions on those?
I do. The insta-valves, you got 317 Sinclair and 109 Fulton. I know when we did the budget, we budgeted for three.
I'll have to get with Rick and see where the other one goes.
As he suggested, there was three places to be able to isolate that parts of town when we had to break. The one time, we couldn't shut enough of the town down. So there was three locations that we had.
Yeah, I think the other one was over by his house on.
I thought so, somewhere on.
Lincoln.
Lincoln, or.
Grant.
Lincoln and Grant, yeah, somewhere in there. So if you can have that maybe for the committee meeting, we can get that one, because if they're coming in and cutting all these in, we may as well, it's going to be contract work, might as well get all three of them done at the same time. Running up against winter, and you know what happens in winter.
Yep. What I'm doing today. So if we can get these approved, I can get those started and have him come out when it comes out for the board. I know this is Todd, but I called Ace and Hold, they're supposed to be here tomorrow or Wednesday.
You sure? They've been saying that for two weeks.
The only other thing I got is our entrance sign. Do I give him the, go ahead to start making it, or what? Right now, we're looking in December to set it.
Yeah, not particularly a good time, but.
Correct.
Yeah, I said it is what it is.
I said we need to go ahead and get it ordered.
You tell him as the council says, order it, I'll call him tomorrow.
With the December set, my only question is, does he see any curing or issues there?
He's going to do the cure, or maybe for the glue.
No, that's what I mean. If we order this, takes them 12 weeks to build it and set and whatever else, are we going to be storing this thing till spring before it can be set? That's my only concern.
Probably 10 weeks to make it, and then two weeks of curing inside. So the only other curing that would be the glue where it sits in the foundation.
Well, they blew the two blocks down, and then they set the center part in it, and then that cures in, too. So my only concern, my, again, my only concern is them doing that in December. If that doesn't cure, are we going to have a bigger problem? And that would be communication back from the guys that built the sign.
Right.
If they see a problem with it and we have to store this thing till spring, then we, well, then we risk something happening to it.
Or they stored for us, and there's a foul, like, storage charge.
I'll call him tomorrow.
I mean, that's my only concern. If we run up against weather and they can't get it set and can't get it cured and can't, do we? do we have to store it, or can they, do they have the ability to store it, or?
Well, he might be able to just start the project later, so that it'd be done by spring.
Well, and that's, that's the other question.
If I can order it, I'll find out more.
Tim, when you get the proposal on the work to be done to the water that we're talking about near Dollar General, can you work with him to get me a copy of that, so I can incorporate that into the agreement?
You expect me to work with him?
I do.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you, Tim's.
It is junior and senior, right?
Do I?
It is junior and senior, right?
Yeah.
Senior, seniors.
Which question?
Um, I have a question. Could you ask too, if we wait till spring, is it the same price? Or does it go up after the first of the year or something?
If I call him tomorrow, it should be the same price. And then when he builds it, when he builds it, that's on him. Not on us.
Okay.
Will someone have a standing ninety day offer or forty-five, that he's not doing it till spring, even a?
Then he can just start it whenever he can get it done by spring.
Okay.
But I will, I will ask.
Anything else for water industry?
Um, no.
Hey, I love seeing all the work done around town. Between both of you, I know that this is a water industry's thing, but I loved seeing all the work happening around town last week. You guys all did a great job.
Thank you.
Water industry, both.
Law enforcement.
I don't have anything.
Oh.
Sorry, but the two valves on Pontiac and Lincoln, and the one on Partridge and Pontiac is all done.
Good. Thank you.
So nothing for law enforcement?
No.
Uh, anything for fire? Understanding there's nothing. Streets?
Uh, I could scroll over a little bit, what we've done, we've been, uh, got about six or eight storm drains repaired. I got the guys doing that. Um, we've been fixing some sink holes that we've been having around town. Uh, the guys have been, got the sow mode, and they've been keeping that grass blowing, and blowing it back into the woods, making that look better there. Uh, the storm drains that, uh, down on Douglas, that J C Dillon repaired, uh, I met with the engineer last week. Uh, there are some problems down there, that we're gonna have to have some pipes, at least one pipeline, because it's an eighteen inch pipe going out of there, there's three pipes in there. Uh, there's two fifteen inch and an eighteen inch, the eighteen inch is the worst, and the engineer says it's, could possibly collapse, because it's so bad with cracks. And he sent me a quote, Dillon, he sent me a quote for all three being done, and then just the main, the eighteen inch, the worst one being done. The two fifteen inch, he said can wait maybe a year or two, they're not as bad, they're cracked, but they're not as bad as the eighteen inch, which needs some, it needs repaired now, so he said. So I'm waiting on those, once I get those quotes from Dillon, I'll be sending them out.
Will they video?
Uh, when they come, and it's in the quote, that they will, they will TV them, but the engineer and the guy from Dillon were down there, and you can see the cracks when you look up in the pipe, and it's kinda doing one of these numbers, it's kinda doing a, it's caving in a little bit here and there.
How long is that?
It's only, it's a thirteen foot run that they got to line it.
Oh.
So it's not a huge, if they just do that one, what's that?
The twelve inch, what's how long are that?
Uh, the fifteen inch, I, I, I think that, I thought you said they were all close to forty feet.
Okay.
Who was, who was the guy we used for sanitary sewer to do the lining? It wasn't Dillon.
Was it hair?
Vis a sewer?
Vis a sewer.
Vis a sewer? We could all, they were, they were cheaper, so it may be where it's getting a quote from them as well.
Southern Illinois.
I know, they were cheaper.
So, but those, they're done, they're gonna be doing the curbs on them here this week, and then the blacktop. But as far as the structures and everything under, underground is done. But, uh, the engineer, he strongly suggests that, right now, we, that we, uh, line the eighteen inch. So. Um, and he said that that can be used with the M F T money, so. And, uh, I think that's all I have.
I've got a question, question for streets, um, so there was a couple different street sweeper options that were sent.
I haven't, I've been waiting for a, an email back from him about some options and prices.
Have we got, I was gonna say, have we gotten any more options, and then have we set up any test drives with any of them, just so we're not?
I have not, because I was waiting on an email from Brad from Key Gather. And I have not heard anything, I will email him tomorrow again.
Just, if we get a chance, and maybe the bolt would be worth going and looking at them and seeing, okay, this is what a forty thousand dollar unit feels like, is worth, and then what a hundred thousand dollar unit looks like and feels like. You guys can give us your opinion on whether you think we're money ahead to look at the more expensive one, or if we can find a better option at one of the lower price points.
Yep.
Cause I know we're getting the, a lot of time we're ready.
Yeah, pretty soon too.
Right.
Anything else for streets or for works of buildings?
I have nothing, um, Todd, you have anything?
No. I, I gotta talk to you about some possible vandalism that I found Sunday, but it wasn't really.
Done.
Yeah.
Already done.
Okay.
In the process.
I would, I tried to find her earlier today about it, and then I.
Yeah, I'm already, already looking into it, I got a meeting in the morning, so.
Alright. That's it.
Okay. Thanks.
Alvin Jost?
Um, I have no report, but I need an executive session for personnel, specific personnel compensation, Pice Three, fifteen minutes, no action.
About your approval of entry, entry sign?
The location, yeah, for, there's been a lot of talk of, um, discussion, I should say, on location of sign. And don't know if that needs to be discussed on where we wanna put the sign and stuff like that, before he was to get it ordered, because I don't know if there needs to be additional things added to the, are we gonna keep it where it was, or?
The pad there.
That's my understanding.
That was it, okay.
I think that was decided.
Yeah, was it?
I think that one was decided.
Yeah, the pad there already there, and the lighting there.
Decide there and discuss whether to drop it or raise the lighting, so you don't have that winding.
Well, we could do that with landscaping too, um, if we put holders in between to kill. I think, so, so we're clear, the only part we're approving of any of this is the sign right now.
Yes.
Cause we've not done.
Called them to.
We've not done any new plans revised for the landscape and eliminating plants or any of that, to make it a no maintenance position, right?
Okay.
Correct.
Good.
Uh, moving on to the consent agenda. Any items wishing to be removed from the consent agenda? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda in its entirety.
Second.
Questions? Clerk Paul.
Alderman Amundson?
Aye.
Alderman Jost?
Aye.
Alderman Newhouse?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Have we actually voted to order the sign? Do we need to do that?
We still have to vote on it.
Yep.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just trying to.
For this council to approve anything, it needs to be on the agenda, informal action has to be taken in an open meeting. So if that has not happened, it needs to happen, even though some other entity is paying for it. This city council is deciding what it is.
You wanna wait to see?
We put this thing off for six months now.
No, that's not what I'm saying, I'm not saying don't move forward with it, there's still some unspoken plans. When are we doing it? When does it have to be paid for? Do you want all of that information before you vote on it?
Or, to your point, can we identify the design composition of the sign in order that now, understanding there's more information required before installation?
Right, that's my real thought would be.
So, do you want that on the agenda for the committee meeting on the third?
Yes, if we're gonna, I mean, Tim's talking to him and everything, we need to order this thing.
We don't need to kick it around the bush about a dozen times, we need to get it ordered.
No, the concern is, is are we ordering it now and not installing it until spring? Are they going to? Or are we ordering it now?
I'll ask him about the.
Right, we need to know, we don't, we don't know when we're, we don't know when we can order it, according to what the questions were earlier this evening.
Okay.
Am I correct?
I can order it now.
But if we order it now, and then they don't install until spring, then the question was, where is it going to be stored? When is it going to be produced? If it's produced right away, as soon as you order it, then where is it going to be stored if we don't want it to be installed until spring?
Well, they're bonding agents' work when it's possibly.
Zero.
Zero.
Right.
I mean, that's.
So I think that's why it hadn't been on the agenda up until this point. I'm just explaining why it hasn't been on the agenda. We can put it on the agenda, and then it can be ordered, and then you guys can deal with whether we store it or they store it, or if we have to pay to have them store it.
So you, you wanna email him tomorrow, or reach out to him and get those answers?
I'm not gonna email him, wait around, I'll call.
Yeah. Okay.
Makes sense to me.
There's going on too long.
Moving on to new business.
Did we enter that? Take a motion to approve, uh, approval of Mauer Stutz fee for the government of water sort of protection in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars.
Second. Questions?
What is this?
That protection plan.
Yeah, water protection plan that we have to have done, the, it's just the fee for, that they charge to have it actually done.
Okay.
And that, it has to be done by the engineer.
Any other questions?
Alderman Amundson?
Aye.
Alderman Jost?
Aye.
Alderman Newhouse? Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Item number two. I entertain a motion to approve the, approve of Mauer Stutz professional services fee in the amount of four thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars fifty cents for overseeing bridge project.
Second. Second.
That wasn't involved in the, well, we needed, we.
No. We got it first and a second.
Yeah.
I guess.
Questions?
Around, around.
Um, does this come out of the, the M F T savings that we had set aside for the bridge?
Yep.
That wasn't included in that estimate?
No, part of the original agreement was, we had to pay for engineering fees, and if we wanted to, our engineers to.
oversee.
oversee it, that was a fund we were, that was not part of the split between, I gotta copy the old bridge agreement.
Okay.
Any other questions? Clerk, please call Earl.
Alderman Amundson?
Aye.
Alderman Jost?
Aye.
Alderman Newhouse?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Motion passed.
It's not on this one. Uh, yeah, item number two, Dave, you wanna do that one?
Wait, which one is that?
Where?
There shouldn't be anything?
Just two.
There should not be anything. No. It was taken off.
Okay, it just wasn't taken off ours.
Oh, it's on your outline?
Yeah. That's why I was. Okay. Uh, any citizens wishing to address the council? Any other business pertaining to the city?
On eight five, our meeting, that you weren't here, there was a lot of talk about some different conduct, and I was wondering if you would like to give your two cents worth.
Okay.
Um, the title jumping of Glen Elbow, over the trucks.
Do what?
The title jumping with the trucks, the city trucks that were sold. Do you know about that? Um, what about the sealed bids showing up in Ridgeway's folder?
What about?
Did you know when you were there?
No.
Okay. Um, what about the payroll sheets?
What about?
They came, like, out of the office?
Yeah. Yeah.
Was it a reason?
Yeah, because I questioned overtime.
Are you allowed to do that?
I don't see why I'm not, I mean, uh, uh, when there was a question of payroll when Tony Brown was here, Justin Newman, uh, he questioned it, had copies of it in a meeting.
Do you know anything about the, uh, executive minutes box being tampered with?
No, I do not.
Okay. And the Costco card and the badge?
What about it?
Care to elaborate anything on that, or?
The, the Costco card was, was issued, uh, we got a Costco card for the city, when Maria was here to purchase these laptops. And I was instructed that myself and, well, at the time, it was Tony, had a Costco card, in our names. Okay?
Well, you weren't here, I just wanted you to be able to give your.
I'm answering your questions.
Okay, that's it.
Other business pertaining to the city?
Do we have total on the bridge project yet? Because they'll bill us back, correct?
Well, we don't know whether or not, uh, we have to pay the direct, uh, to the county, or.
The county pays it, and then they bill us back.
But it's approximately what, Tim, three hundred and thirty thousand?
Three thirty-eight, eight sixteen. That's, that is what we approved in the March twenty-fifth.
No additions, no changes, no, no change orders that would have changed any of that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. I just wasn't sure how that process worked, I know, we started this, what, eight years ago? Seems like.
Yeah.
I think, haven't come back yet, so.
I think the way, I think the county pays Stark.
And then, we are in the county for our.
The county sends us an invoice, and we pay the county, whatever the, you know.
I just wasn't sure how that was, if you had information, how that was.
We had to have a pretty good chunk of it available when we set the order and get it done.
Correct. Okay. Other business pertaining to the city?
Where were we at with the outfalls that were on LaSalle? We haven't got, you had contractor and engineer set up?
Yeah. Did. But they haven't got back with everything yet, and they want special dirt put in there, they want the trees out of there. We don't have the equipment, and I asked for two estimates from Dillon and Walker, and neither one's gotten back. Because we do not have the equipment to reach down that far and get those trees. And then if you have to cut a path to get dirt back there, DNA is wanting certain trees put back in there.
Okay.
And then you gotta have certain dirt to put in there. Can't just use like dirt we got down there, they want special dirt. So, and the two estimates never come in, so I just assume they don't wanna do it.
So, I mean, are we setting other estimates out, or?
Or if you give me a list of who to call that can handle that kinda stuff, I'll call them. Walker and Dillon's the only one that I knew of. Because that one over there is deeper than bats.
Guess I haven't seen that.
Well, just let me know and I'll show you where it's at. There's a very big tree about ready to fall in there. Every time it rains or high winds, I go look to see if that tree's still there. Cause half the roots have shown.
Okay, I just, uh, we've been several months or years trying to get it caught there too.
I'm trying.
Okay.
Should we maybe cut it down before it falls in there?
Do I?
Should we maybe cut it down or?
That's a peak of park history.
Can you get somebody to do that through that?
That's what we talked about.
That is almost pulling teeth.
Okay. Any other business pertaining to the city?
If none, I entertain, uh, to make a motion to enter executive session, discuss personnel times three on compensation. Correct?
Take your second.
Everybody, everybody said it.
I'm gonna take Newhouse. Alderman Amundson?
Aye.
Alderman Jost?
Aye.
Alderman Newhouse?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
How long?
Fifteen minutes.
Any action?
No.
Who do you want to stay?
Um, let's start with streets and, um, Tim. So Todd and Tim.